And call the March seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-two meeting of the Planning Board to order at seven oh four P M. We have several items on the agenda, the first being a continuance of the application for a special permit filed by Tobacco Hill Capital Partners and the Associated Stormwater Management Application for a permit as well. We also have a discussion of the commercial overlay district, particularly as it may affect the Gordon Conwell Theological Seminary. And we also intend to discuss whatever other bylaw amendments may be warranted. So that so that discussion could, in fact, continue to June seventh, depending on how much time we have. But I would like to allocate about thirty minutes or so to remarks by Robin Stein and also by Emile. He's going to give us a little background on form-based codes. And then I'd like to allocate about fifty minutes to the discussion of Gordon Conwell Theological Seminary. And then maybe half an hour or so to other proposed bylaw changes. And then address board business. So we'll go ahead and take roll calls. So when I call your name, please indicate whether you're present. Rick Mitchell?
Rick Mitchell, present.
Richard Boroff?
Richard Boroff here.
Jonathan Poor?
Jonathan Poor, present.
Emile Dalquist?
Emile Dalquist here, present.
Pat Norton?
Pat Norton, present.
Corey Boulou?
Corey Boulou, present.
And Marty Crouch, present. Oh, and I think Bill is here. I see Elizabeth Wheaton, and that might be her iPad or phone or something along those lines.
But he's got muted, so.
Bill's incognito.
He's incognito. But we do have a quorum, and I'm sure we will go ahead and assume that he will eventually emerge as a full participant. And as I mentioned, Beth Hurd did send me an email indicating that she wouldn't be able to join the meeting, at least initially. So at this juncture, I'm going to ask for a motion to continue the public hearing on the senior housing special permit and the stormwater management permit application to June twenty-third at seven P M via Zoom. So if someone could make that.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? And when I call your name, you can indicate your position. Rick Mitchell?
Aye.
Richard Boroff?
Richard Boroff, aye.
Jonathan Poor?
Jonathan Poor, aye.
Emile Dalquist?
Emile Dalquist, aye.
And Marty Crouch, aye. Oh, there's Bill. Bill, can you indicate your presence and how you vote on the continuation of the senior housing special?
Vote, aye.
And and obviously your presence. So that's great. Okay, at this juncture, I think we're going to turn the meeting over to Robin Stein for some brief remarks. She was going to give us just a bit of background on some pending litigation involving the Planning Board, as well as perhaps an introduction to the processes by which amendments to the bylaw and the zoning bylaw are made and can come before town meeting in the appropriate fashion. So, Robin, the stage is yours.
All right. Well, good evening, everyone. This is Robin Stein from K P Law, Work Town Council. I think we were not going to do the litigation update today because that didn't make the agenda, at least the agenda I saw. So we can put that on for another meeting.
Right. And I don't think that's particularly critical at the moment. There's nothing pending in state court that requires any action on the part of the Planning Board.
No, we're proceeding as we are. So we can put that on for another time, just where there are new folks on the board. And Marty, if you and I want to connect about it sometime in more detail, we can as well.
Yes, I'd be interested in doing that.
Yeah, feel free to give me a call. But where it's not on the agenda for tonight, I think we'll skip that one for another night. And I'll just perhaps talk a little bit about the zoning bylaw amendment process. And feel free, folks, to jump in if you have any questions. I'm happy to be interrupted. But I'm sure most of you, what, you know, maybe some of you are new members to the board, haven't been through this process before. But general law, Chapter forty-eight, Section five spells out the process by which cities and towns can amend their zoning bylaws, on which they can create new zoning districts. And the whole process is way down that statute. But essentially, what happens is a bylaw amendment is proposed to the town through the Board of Selectment, and it can be proposed by the select board, by the Planning Board. The statute lists the different groups that can initiate a zoning change. It can be done by a landowner who owns land subject to the change. It can be done as a citizen's petition, can be done by a regional planning agency. And so ordinarily, the way the process works is a zoning bylaw is proposed to the Board of Selectmen. They refer it to the Planning Board for a public hearing. The Planning Board has to hold a public hearing within sixty-five days, I believe, of when they receive it, and make a recommendation on the change. And that recommendation can be that you're in favor of adopting the amendment. The recommendation can be that you're not in favor of adopting the amendment, or perhaps that you're in favor of adopting of town meeting adopting the amendment, but with some modification or change. Or your recommendation could be that you think it needs further study and that you're not ready to to make that recommendation. Goes on the warrant for town meeting, and then, you know, town meeting has the opportunity to act on that amendment. The vast majority of zoning amendments require two-thirds vote at town meeting. However, with the recent, what we call Housing Choice Amendments to the Zoning Act, there are some limited instances where it's just a majority vote. And that has to do with creating certain types of housing and other accessory units, things like that. And in those instances, we would take a good look at the particular bylaw, because what we've been seeing sometimes is bylaws actually have a mix in them, if they're a whole section of what might need a majority vote, what might need a two-thirds vote. So we'd have to look at that in more detail. But it really is a pretty a pretty simple streamlined process of just an amendment being proposed, being referred to the Planning Board, and having that public hearing. Now, in the case of this particular amendment that's on the agenda tonight for what you're calling the C O D bylaw, there's some work, I think, to be done before it's formally initiated. And that, I think, is the process that you folks are going through now. You're working with the landowner, with the planning department, and folks in the town to actually put together that amendment that'll then be presented to the select board to start the process. So it seems like, you know, you're a little bit ahead, or you're not quite to the point of initiating this as a change. We're still working on creating the text itself. So once you get it ready, that's the process for the change. But right now, you're just working through what you think it might want to look like.
Right. And would the same process apply to a change in the town bylaw?
No. So forty-eight, Section five exclusively applies to zoning bylaws. Town bylaws don't go through the process of a Planning Board public hearing, unless you have something in your local regulations, but I don't believe you do, but statutorily, no.
So that. How would you change a town bylaw?
So that can be put on a warrant as a warrant article to amend the town bylaw. It just doesn't require the Planning Board public hearing process. And in the vast majority of cases, it's most likely a majority vote. But we'd have to look at the exact language of it. Sometimes it depends on, you know, what the bylaw is.
Okay, well, that's very helpful. Thank you, Robin. And as we work through this process, and really, we are just at the very, very beginning of this process, we will undoubtedly have more specific questions for you, but thank you for that. And now, Emile is going to give us just a very brief overview of form-based zoning. And at the June seventh meeting, we're planning to have a joint meeting with the Master Plan Steering Committee. And at that point, Emile will probably give us a slide presentation and expand his comments about this type of zoning. And I think it's worthwhile to have this in the back of our minds because we have several bylaws that have never been used. And so if they've never been used, it might be time to rethink them and and come up with a better concept. At least we could save some paper in the binders that that we have that contain our zoning bylaw. But we've never used the Open Space and Farmland Preservation Bylaw. And Patrick, you correct me if I'm wrong, the Estate Overlay District Bylaw or the Commercial Overlay District Bylaw, and there may be some others. So.
You're right on all three accounts.
Right. So and then I would just note that it's it's very interesting that the Commercial Overlay District bears a lot of resemblance to the Willow Street Overlay District. And of course, we have a Business District as well added to the mix. So, Emile, maybe you could introduce us to this form-based approach to development. And although it may be new to us in just the brief period of time where I've had an opportunity to look at this, it is really not a new concept. I mean, it has been around and promulgated by what appeared to be very wise people. So you can fill us in a little bit more, Emile. You're muted.
Thank you. Actually, the Form-Based Codes began about in the nineteen eighties, actually, and it came from an architectural source, really, in having a deal with zoning bylaws. And just just a brief comment on the origin of zoning bylaws. They came about in the nineteen twenties, following World War One. And they were done for the particular time where there was a lot of interest in mostly nuisance issues of smokestacks from industrial use next to residential areas. So there was a movement at the time, and it was in the mid nineteen twenties, when they decided to use an approach where they separated all uses into different categories, and they they separated them physically within a community. In other words, zoning was then based, it was organized about around separating all of the uses into different areas of the community. And of course, over the years, these bylaws slowly took hold across the nation. And it took a while before you started seeing the effects of them. Hamilton, it looks like that adopted its own zoning in around nineteen fifty-four. So it was pretty late to the to the game, I guess. But what happened over a long period of time was that people were realizing they weren't getting getting the results that they had hoped for. And so there was a lot of thought given to, well, why is that? Why is it that, asking some simple questions, why is it that we like to visit one type of place, and yet we build something quite different in our own towns? We know the answer is we know how to do it right, but we don't do it. And it got narrowed down to actually the zoning regulations, for the most part, mandate a particular result. And that result was not one that people who lived residents particularly liked in the community. And so they they started this, they analyzed it and came up with this form-based approach where there are really three regulating mechanisms in zoning bylaws. There's form, there's use and density, and there's management. Those are the three that get manipulated within the zoning regs. And what what happened in the original zoning was that the use and density were given a high priority in determining what the bylaws were stating. And that what was found was that they actually had very little to do with the environment in terms of what you actually see on the ground. They were really overweighted for their value to to the community. That doesn't mean that. Well, so it was an idea to try to rebalance that relationship between basically form and use. And in the slide presentation I'll give next week, I'll give you examples. It's pretty hard to give you just a brief narrative of what this is about without showing pictures because the form bases, when you look at the Form-Based Codes, they're all about graphics. They're all about less language and more pictorial of the of actually what the built environment should look like. And so I think it'll be more informative. So I'm just going to touch on some of the highlights, maybe the differences between conventional zoning and form-based zoning. The conventional planning and zoning codes now, just getting this information from the Form-Based book that I have, conventional is sort of auto-oriented segregated land use planning principles, whereas form-based would be mixed-use, walkable, compact, development-oriented principles. Conventional is organized around single-use zones. Form-based is based on spatial organizing principles that identify and reinforce a built hierarchy, such as rural to active transect, which I'll explain just very briefly and get into more detail next next meeting. Use is primary in conventional, whereas physical form and character are primary with secondary attention to use. And that's a very important one for the for actually the physical construct of of any part. So how is this form-based used and where is it used? Well, you can use it in particular areas that, as town centers, for example, is an excellent use for that. And the process itself in coming up with a form-based, there are basically three major steps in it. First one is to hold a something similar to what the Master Plan Subcommittee did in November, which was a visioning session. The community is brought together under the direction of a facilitator from a design company. It's actually the designers come to town for a four-day period. And they work with the citizens, and they they sort of facilitate and direct and and lead the discussions around what it is that they like about the community, what's valuable to them, and so forth. So it's a set of multidisciplinary professionals who do that. There are architects, landscape architects, economic developers, and others who are integral to to looking at all the aspects in a holistic way about a community, how a community should develop. So working with townsfolk, they conduct a series of meetings with some loopback feedback loops in a process so that it's not one meeting, and then everything is designed. These designers take the information that they receive, they put start putting it into graphic form. It's it's an active studio that's open to the public for this three- or four-day period. And so people can drop in and just check out what's going on. And then they have, you know, on day two or three, they might have another feedback loop with the public again. As the design kind of emerges slowly in the design concept on as drawings, for example, the people can react to them as to whether it was expected or not. And so it's a highly structured process and an intense design for, as I say, four to five days maximum. In that time period, what I'll show you next week is what the finished product looks like and what how it actually works. The the it's an interesting process. I was personally involved in probably four different charrette processes for a town center, for a couple of other, a sub-center, another part of the community that was being considered for economic development. And and the third one, which was which was interesting, which I wanted to mention, it was for the Hartford Insurance Company was in Simsbury, Connecticut. They had this seven hundred thousand square foot building, one hundred and seventy acres on the Farmington River. Beautiful building, granite slab exterior, really A-one building. They were downsizing. They wanted to leave their campus in Simsbury and consolidate in Hartford and other places. And so they wanted to put the building on the market. What they did was contact the community to find out what is the interest in the community, if they were to sell to somebody. They were the highest taxpayers in the town of Simsbury, to the tune of one point six million a year, or something like that. So they were a loss for the community, clearly. So the idea was Hartford, and being a good neighbor, decided to work with the town to come up with some ideas that might enhance the value of their property by going through this form-based process, design process, where working with townsfolk come there through another visioning session and then drafting bylaws as a result of that to create things that are that actually the people and actually other members of the design team, including from the Hartford. They had obviously certain interests to protect there, too. So they wanted to be sure they were getting a maximum use, a maximum best use of the property. That was the result of that was a set of codes that were pretty detailed so that it made it easier for a developer to come in. And if he followed the code exactly the way it was intended, the approval process would be streamlined. You'd be able to get an approval in a very short period of time, almost an executive decision, because he was following the code. In other words, all of the effort was put in on the front end of the project. The town spent the time and a little bit of money to do it. I think the Hartford kicked in a lot of the design fees to get this off the ground. But the result was there were three or four different options that were acceptable to the general public. And it was they was fine with the Hartford Building folks, or the owners of the Hartford property. And they had their real estate consultants there, of course, working with everybody else. So everybody was paying attention to their aspect to this project. But it turned out to be, I think, a really success in that, in the end, everything was in place, and the Hartford could use this information, this all this effort that was put into a design and a series of regulations, so what we call bylaws here, that was that went with the property once it was purchased by somebody else. So it was kind of interesting. They examined whether a single use might be the best thing there, like a corporate headquarters. That was at the time when corporate headquarters were leaving office parks. So they were not going there in large, certainly not the size of seven hundred thousand square feet building. So that was not an option. There was not any offers for a single use. And they had options for multiple use and so forth. And then mixed use, where they would have residential component to it, as well as a retail office business. But all designed in a way that would fit that particular part of the town. So that that was a use of that form base that was very effective, I thought, and a good partnership that was developed between the landowner and the town of Simsbury. The the other process, the downtown, the entire downtown district in, which is only about a mile long, the original Main Street or Hop Meadow Street in in Simsbury, a series of demograph demographics were very similar to what Hamilton has in terms of its population and level of education. I had a number of historic buildings that were done in the early early twentieth century, late nineteenth century, that were built by wealthy folks who used the town as a summer residence. And those buildings, of course, were all preserved, and they became protected buildings once this code was drawn, and to be kept intact as examples of what that of the not only the history of the the town and the architectural heritage, but also what the town is interested in having in terms of reproducing that character and the rest of it. So again, the form base fits right into that because it is about preserving character of the community. It's fully controlled by the folks who are volunteering their efforts in this, in that, that you can build as much or as little as you want on any site. It's not all predetermined by anybody. So it is a collaborative effort. And through these visioning sessions, and those of you who maybe attended the one in November, it was all about driving consensus. And then when these groups came, and they were all divided up in individual, ten individual tables or so, six people each, the idea was not to bring all your ideas to the table and get them get them all approved. But the idea was to present your your ideas, hear somebody else's, and then through a consensus discussion, come up with the right solutions. So it was a it was a terrific way to bring people together and rally them behind a particular project. The the other thing that needs to happen when you do Form-Based Codes is to come up with some kind of organizing principle for establishing, well, what is what does it mean to be in character? And there was there was a process that was called the transect. Again, I'll get into this in a little more detail next time, but with pictures. The transect comes from an ecological study procedure where you would take, say, they if you were studying the ecology from the seashore up to Moon Hill, but and let's assume Moon Hill is six thousand feet high in the air at Bradley Palmer. So you draw a line between the two, and then you study it every every mile along the way, and you you check the flora fauna, and you document it and so forth. So what it is 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 a way to produce a continuum of a transition from one place to another that's completely different. In that case, it was the seashore up to a mountain that is above tree line. So no trees up there. You get down closer to the water, and you have a whole different microclimate, a whole different structural type of plants and materials and so forth. So what they what they came up with, which is really an interesting way to, and you can identify your town in this way, which is very, very interesting way to do it, and what you would do in establishing, well, what does it mean to be in character with particular parts of the town? We and they do it by by rural to, I'll use the word urban, but the most urban thing in this town is town center. You know, it's it's the it's the Railroad Depot and the and the and the mall down there. But within that, so that forms a continuum. In other words, you can identify three, at least three, maybe four different districts within that continuum that have quite different characteristics that if a project were to go in any one of those zones, it should be developed in a particular way that is consistent with the characteristics of that area. And just give you a quick example, the rural versus urban. Something that's very rural would be a swale on the side of the road. You'd never see a curve out there on Upper Raspberry around Bradley Palmer in the rural part. Whereas in a downtown area, you would see curves there. Those those little details are small elements that, when when put together, they start to give some definition to what's referred to as the public realm. And that's the key here in the Form-Based Codes, because you're taking private buildings and you're studying how they work in the public realm and trying to improve that and improving the public realm, which is sidewalks, lights, benches, the things that people use when they go into town. And it so those little details, like a wooden structure is more common in a rural area, and it's a brick structure perhaps more common in an urban area, those details. And again, I a town like Hamilton, you can really identify and define what these characteristics are in a different sections so that there is a logic behind it and that it will guide the thinking in terms of what does it mean to preserve open space? Or you want to you want to define what it is you is really appreciated by the people? What are their treasures here in in Hamilton? Where do they go? Where do they want to spend their time? Who where do they take their guests? What do they show them? Those kinds of things become treasures for the town that should be preserved and used as landmarks and even guideposts going forward in terms of future planning. And it isn't at all about building sort of a theme park at all here. It's it because modern architecture can play a big part of this. But it is about the form, which is massing, building, massing, size on a property, location on the property, where the parking is put on the property. So that you're trying to take a condition where the previous, the older bylaws were essentially pushing buildings away from the street and pushing them apart in order to create parking lots between the building and the street. So that slowly the town starts to get disconnected because these landmarks, these buildings are being pushed farther apart from each other on opposite sides of the streets, further away from each other along this along the streets. So it starts to break down the the integrity, really, of that fabric in the downtown area. And if the idea is to kind of restore an original character, they really it is about doing it in a in a place like New England, doing it in an older form, a way to do it. And a place like Nantucket, which was brought up sometime. But if you go through Nantucket today, it is like a it is a huge code violation. You you could not build anything like that anymore. And because of what the zoning would not allow it any longer, that's all kind of grandfathered in because of their their historic preservation work. But just in a nutshell, that pretty much is what the form base is about. And it only works because you, at the end of this visioning process and defining your town, you can then start to prepare your zoning bylaws to fit a particular design or building type. or building type or village or whatever, whatever it turns out to be. You can then start your regulation, once you know what it is that you want to do, you want to build. If you start with just sort of a general, a general code, that's, that's vague enough to go anywhere. And the, and part of the problem is that with single use zoning, there's no identification of what is appropriate where. In other words, it's a one size fits all, what belongs in the northern part of Hamilton belongs in the southern part, if it's in the same R1A or R1D zone. So the whole thing is about identifying the particular features of your town, which is not that difficult to do and, and do the study upfront. And by being proactive in this design process, what you're doing is saying now, when a developer comes into town, this is what the town approved. This is the, this is the project we'd like to see here. And if the developer says, that's fine, that's what I'll build, then that approval process is really streamlined. It's a lot easier to get an approval. The situation now, it's a contest. It's a battle between different factions in town. Do you, do you like the development or not? And you get there, there is a constant conflict, I think, that, that takes place because it's not predictable. And the best thing about the form based is that it's a predictable outcome with a lot of assurance and it's that predictability that developers love and the people that, who live in a town love it as well. So I think that's really a, something that before we, the planning board gets into discussing a lot about modifying a particular, like a COD, understand what, that there are other options that might be much more effective once we get to understand what they are and how to do them. And again, that, having been this, through this several times now with three or four charat processes and form based codes, it is a fascinating process to get involved in, very rewarding. And I think for the town, really, it'd be kind of a trend setting. It's becoming much more used now. I noticed there was a model code on the Massachusetts website, a form based code along with TND, which is traditional neighborhood development. That's a whole different process. But it's a great way to introduce form based and smart growth together in any new development and any other, any part of this town going forward. The town can't create any more new land, so it really has to take care of the land that's still available to be developed and it has to get developed. And what you're going to find is that developers, actually one of the best ways to grow your town is through this form based code because it is so predictable. It has that predictability, it has that certainty to it. Developers like that and the town likes that. So I think it's a great process to understand a little bit, in a little bit more detail. So Marnie, that's it in a nutshell.
Yeah, well, thank you, Emile. I, I really think it, it gives us a lot to think about and, you know, particularly when we go through some of the proposals, like the Winthrop School and it, it really provides food for thought.
Yeah.
And with some creative thinking, I can, I can envision actually some very, very constructive and, and beautiful things happening with an approach like that, particularly integrating any newer development with perhaps a reconfiguration of how Patton Park is laid out, especially since its parking is right out there in front, in front of the park. So with that said, I think we should then turn to Gordon Conwell Theological Seminary. And I ask Patrick to forward the article from the Salem Daily News to everyone because there was an announcement by the seminary that they, that there was an intent to sell the acreage that the seminary owns in Hamilton. And I, I can see that we do have some representatives here from the seminary. And Patrick, I, I will turn, turn it to you because you have been on the task force, or at least a liaison to the task force. And perhaps you could introduce the, the representatives of the seminary to the board members so that we know who we're talking with tonight.
Excellent. Thank you, Marnie. Again, I'm Patrick Refit, Director of Planning and Inspections. The Gordon Conwell Theologic Seminary has been working with the town for a number of years now. We have made a, a number of contacts with them through the, the years. I know their president isn't available tonight, but we do have Attorney Mayor Wynne Walters. We also do have a former Vice President of the College, Jay Treewin, who has worked with us for a number of years as business operations, financial director of the college on a number of different endeavors. Excited to have them before the board. I can tell you that Jay came to the town in early March of this year, made a personal request that the town consider a, an amendment to the COD zoning bylaw. And it, since that time, Marywyn, I know has made an extensive review of that text. He's made a number of comments relative to that text and suggestions that he'd like to make to the board as well. So, but I, I did invite both of them tonight and I thank them for being here.
Well, I envision that, that Attorney Walters or Mr. Treewin, that either one of you could, could make just a brief presentation about what triggered the decision to sell and also whether the intent is to sell all the acreage. I do know from my service on the Affordable Housing Trust that Harbor Light Community Partners had, and I don't know if they still have, an option on, with respect to some of the, some or all of the dormitory units. And I don't know the status of that. And, you know, obviously there's a question if, if there is a change in zoning to commercial, what happens with the residential? There is obviously a requirement that there be a change of use from dormitory housing to any other type of housing. And I think, Patrick, again, correct me if I'm wrong, if it was just a single change of use, that would be, be before the ZBA, am I correct?
That's my understanding.
Right. So anyhow, gentlemen, if you would just fill us in on some background, and I know from emails that Patrick did raise some questions and I think he forwarded those questions to you. So if you could, if possible, address some of them, I think it would be helpful to initiate the discussion.
Since my name came up in what Patrick said, I want to clarify that and then I'll turn it over to you to lead, if you don't mind. In Patrick's description, I was there in late March, first part of April. No, it was late February, first part of March, came and visited Town Hall. But I wouldn't have known what a COD was. There was a preliminary informal discussion that was taking place between town officials and seminary officials that informed us that this was even a possibility or that it was a thing, that there was something out there that was short of a zoning change, but it, it would open up options. And so we looked into it enough to realize that it was something we were, were interested in continuing to discuss and pursue. But, but I, I don't want to quite couch that we came in with a request because really it grew out of a mutual discussion of cooperation and collaboration of looking for ways, and it goes back for years. So I see Mr. Tenzer's on, on the call here, years ago, working with him and others, as we look for ways that a tax exempt organization could benefit the community with revenues and revenue sources that we didn't have the money to just contribute, but what else could we do, what creative things could be done to, to build the, the partnership between the town and the institution? So I just want to kind of clear that up maybe a little bit. And then from there, I'll let Myron take it and we'll talk about how we got to where we are today. I'll just also mention that when Emile was discussing what had happened in another place with another entity, the, the words collaboration and cooperation kept coming up and really that's what we envisioned happening here. I can tell you that for, for absolute certainty. Oh, and my other one, I, I, I just couldn't pass up because you mentioned the, the article in the Salem News, and this is not a shot at the Salem News or any other news entity, but the nuances of what is taking place are seldom captured in the journalistic attempts. I'll just say that.
Thank you again for the invitation to be here again. I'm Myron Walters. I'm also a lifelong resident of Hamilton and lived within a couple of miles of the seminary campus since I was born. So I come here obviously representing the seminary, but also as a, as a longtime resident of the town. Yeah, this, this came out of that, as we understand it, a mutual understanding with the town that this was a parcel that had been identified by, by folks in town as, as perhaps a good one for expanding the, the commercial overlay district. And so we went back and over the past, well, probably about a couple of months, I guess, have looked at it internally and we took it up as far as the Board of Trustees and, and they indicated the support that this indeed could be a win-win situation for the seminary and then also for the town if, if the overlay district is expanded to it. And as we looked at it, it, it seemed to make sense to us on a number of levels, just the nature of the parcel itself, over 100 acres. There are a number of existing buildings that could be converted in part or in whole to various commercial uses that are permitted under the overlay district. It has access roads, three different accesses to three different roads on Essex Street, Woodbury and, and Bridge Street. It's mostly developed in the sense of, there's, there's not a lot of just forest there. It's a, it's mostly lawn and has a lot of variation in terms of, of height, some slopes, some flat areas. And so it, it looks like it's well positioned both for use of existing buildings. There are approximately, I think about 20 buildings on there, varied sizes. A number of them are residential. As you know, there are six larger apartment buildings and then a couple of smaller residential buildings and then the main two buildings up on the top of the hill, which contain at this point, a lot of the administrative offices and, and lecture halls and chapel and, and library. So it's, it seems like a pretty, a pretty good fit for this kind of thing. And so the seminary has indicated to the town that we're, we're certainly open to doing this. And as we went and looked at the bylaws it is now, and, and I'm not fully aware of the history of it, the others on this Zoom call would understand more about the history of it, but it's located down the street from me on Travaca Road, currently where the old landfill was. And so obviously when that was drafted, it didn't contemplate the idea of there being existing buildings, existing parcels, et cetera. So when, when I looked at it, it seemed that there were several things that we would probably want to look together at, with a planning board to, to modify the bylaws it is right now. Obviously something that takes into account that there are existing buildings, there's nothing in there now that accounts for that. It was, Mr. Dalquus used a, a couple of really, I think, key words there as he was describing that approach to zoning, where we talk about, you know, predictability for people who might want to come in, streamlining processes, letting people know what was, what can be done there with, without the need of, of a tremendous amount of permitting. And given again, that there's, there are a number of buildings there, that seems to, to be susceptible to that kind of an approach. So if we look at these sort of conceptually, that would be the first thing that I would say we probably want to look at. And then as part of the review process, there are probably things that are in the COD currently that are probably not applicable without getting into the weeds, you know, things like can't cut trees down while something is pending, et cetera. Well, it's an ongoing use right now, whereas the, the landfill parcel has no current use. So there might be things like that that should be considered. And then as well, from the seminary's position, and, and I can answer, Madam Chair, the, the question that you have, and I think this is what, what Mr. Truen was, was alluding to. There seems to have glommed on here, this idea that, that the seminary is selling completely and, and that, that probably isn't the best way to look at it. The seminary now, at this point recognizes it needs to right-size the property. It's currently under utilizing it for all the normal things that we've read about in the papers about, about higher education and use and, and people traveling and people learning online, et cetera. So it is underutilized. And so the seminary is interested in making what we call could be good stewards. That means taking care of what we have and, and doing it in a way that, that makes, makes sense economically to the seminary. So it's a measured process that we're looking at. There's, there's no present buyer of, of the seminary property, et cetera. And so maybe allay those concerns or put those, those concerns to rest at this point. Absolutely selling some of the parcel is something that we would consider. And, and the overlay district really does allow for, I think, a measured approach to that and it would, that's certainly the benefit to the seminary because we could then think creatively about, again, repurposing some buildings that would be helpful financially for us. And a third concept that comes into play with this is, is how then could this be subdivided within that parcel? And is there a way, so the seminary is one of the things that it has to consider and wants to consider is what, what could it retain on the site? What kinds of functions, be it administrative, perhaps even residential and, and/or even perhaps pedagogical teaching classes, that sort of thing? Are there those kinds of, of, of uses that could be used with the current buildings or, or another building, et cetera? So, but to do that, I think it would be helpful if the planning board could, could help us think through what means it would be to subdivide within that property so that you could have multiple users, multiple owners that would put the property to, to use. In terms, I'm happy to, to talk briefly about Harbor Light. Harbor Light does have an option and my understanding is that they will be submitting something to the ZBA in fairly short course with respect to, to, to the, the apartment buildings. So that's just, just the apartment buildings and not any other portion of the, of the seminary parcel.
Would that just be Buildings A and B?
Well, the plan, it's, it's, it's a successive thing. So initially it's Buildings A and B. They will then have an option, they have an option on C and D as well. And then we've, we're retaining rights on E and F that, that those, so at this point, that's not determined yet.
And would that be a 40B that they're, that they're looking at? Do you know?
I, at that, at this point, I probably defer to, to Mr. DeFranza, who was the principal of, of Harbor Light, a, as to what he's going to be looking at. And as I say, I, I understand that he's going to be submitting paperwork to the ZBA fairly soon on that.
Marnie, can I ask a question?
Absolutely. And, and that was going to be my next comment, that I would like to really throw this discussion open so that all members of the planning board can ask whatever questions they deem appropriate. So Rick, please go ahead.
So I'm on, have been on the Gordon Theological Seminary Task Force, so have been involved in these discussions for more than two years. And one of the hallmarks is that this is, it's a moving puzzle. Every time we have a conversation or I get information, the plan has changed in one form or another. And it's sort of struck me that Mr. Waters was looking for the town to help the seminary determine what it, what its potential uses are. That's not the role of the planning board. And so the question I have is, has the seminary engaged a professional, either real estate management or real estate either real estate management or real estate, um, investment firm to do strategic planning on what it needs for its uses? How it wants to monetize, um, the property? And what kinds of uses does it see going forward? Or, uh, that piece of property? Cause right now I'm, I'm getting, well, we've got Harbor Lights here. We're not sure what we want to do with the seminary and our uses. And we'd like to have the planning board tell us what we could be doing with other pieces of the, the remaining property. And the lack of clarity just is, is a, a real challenge to try and make any sense out of this. Come up with something logical and concrete.
Really a fair question. And perhaps I was misunderstood on that. Uh, certainly we, we would not be looking to the planning board to tell us what uses, uh, to, to make of the property. Uh, we, we're satisfied with the commercial overlay district listed, uh, uses. I, it may be worth considering, uh, whether any should be added. Again, given the fact that this is developed, fully developed land rather than what was down at the, uh, at, at the landfill. Uh, but that list is, uh, it is a good list and would, would allow some flexibility in terms of the kinds of, of either tenants or purchasers that could come in. Uh, so yes, we are in the process now of putting together the team of real estate professionals. There is a, a team being put together, uh, and so we will, we anticipate over the next several months that we would be, uh, getting some more clarity about that. But it is, it is an iterative process. Uh, things have happened over the last several years in terms of demographics, in terms of education, in terms of COVID, et cetera, uh, that are, that are focusing in and now. So, uh, we have this great piece of property. Uh, we may be able to continue using it, but we need to do our internal work to make sure that it makes fiscal sense for us to do that. And that's a definite possibility.
Uh, just a follow-up question. The, uh, ZBA meeting is scheduled for June 7th. If I understand it, as the owners of the property, it would be the seminary going before the ZBA asking for a change of use. Is that correct?
Uh, that's my understanding. Of course, it's, it's Harbor Lake that will carry the, uh, water on that. Uh, and my understanding is that they do want to make that, uh, that meeting. And, and if not, that meeting will be the following one.
Yeah, but it will be you that will be asking for a change of use.
Yes, it's, it, it will be done, but the purpose of course is, uh, for then Harbor Light as it purchases the buildings.
Okay. So that's a, that's another challenge. For all of us is that, and Marty certainly could speak to this better than I because, that presentation has made to the, um, affordable housing trust. But it sounds like there are multiple moving pieces with Harbor Light proposal as well. They've got an option on two buildings, a potential option on two other buildings. College may be retaining two other, two of the other buildings. But the lack of clarity here is, is, uh, continuing to be frustrating in terms of trying to get some clarity and definition as to what actually is happening so that we can do some thoughtful planning. And
I will interject right now, uh, Rick, if, if you don't mind, just to, it, it will help, uh, just, uh, maybe help everyone. My recollection of what Andrew DeFranza said, and, and, and I'm sorry if I mentioned 40B because he specifically ruled that out. But he did indicate that, that Harbor Light had this option. And the financing for, uh, any kind of affordable housing that he, that Harbor Light would develop on the property would be complex. Now, he did seem to indicate that buildings A and B might be, um, able to be transformed quicker than the other buildings. But he also indicated that it was in Harbor Light's playbook to have the option and potentially, uh, do nothing with the property for several years until it could put a financing package together. So it, it, from the town's perspective, on the one hand, we do need affordable housing, that's a given. But on the other hand, perhaps we need revenue more than affordable housing. Uh, I, I would, as to my side, if we go to overrides, uh, the vast majority of people in Hamilton would be lobbying for, um, increased revenue, uh, sources for the town. So it, it just appears to me that, that the, the change of use is clearly, uh, critical. But the other thing is that just imprinting a commercial overlay district, which, and I've reviewed the, uh, bylaw and I find, uh, quite a number of issues with it, won't solve, really won't solve any problems because it appears that you need to, um, subdivide the property. I mean, if, if you're keeping some for residential, how does that really play into a commercial overlay district? So where, where is the commercial? Where is the residential? How does that meet? The planning board, the, the commercial overlay district doesn't particularly as co- uh, con- constructed now, doesn't have any of that flexibility. And really listening to Emile, it might be that, uh, a form-based approach to this site uh, could be a better answer than, uh, a commercial overlay district. Now I throw that out for food for thought. So please, anybody else follow up with what I just said.
I'd like to open up an idea that by subdividing the parcel, and you've already subdivided it, right? Planning board has before it, uh, a string of houses along Bridge Street on land that could only be described as very, very challenging. It may require some infrastructure investment by the town in order to accommodate that unit. So that, that caught everybody by surprise, but that's a, you know, that's one parcel. Then we have the affordable units. You think you might want to keep some dormitory space. And then in terms of the, of the institutional part of the campus, you might want to keep part of that. Maybe shooting yourself in the foot a little bit, which is that if there is some large en- entity that might want to take over, uh, basically the hill or a large part of the hill, by chopping it up into various different uses, you may preclude that. So I would, in my own fear is that you may carve it up into different parcels, but then you wind up actually maybe not making as much money and maybe not helping out the town as much because they're all disparate. They don't have any connection. You want to, you know, keep some ability to use the ca- the campus, uh, the apartments and no corporation is going to want to build a corporate campus with you in the middle of it. So it, it's, it sounds a little bit like it's kind of a hodgepodge, do this, a little of that, a little of that, a little of that, and a little of that. I guess I would support Rick's idea. You really should do some very comprehensive planning for the whole site and be very careful that you don't carve off parcels and start the development process and in the, in the, you know, and as you go along, find out that you really lost an opportunity to, to have something much more comprehensive and more profitable in the way.
What size of property are we actually talking about here? How many acres are we dealing with in this conversation?
About a hundred acres, yeah. But we're going to back out, obviously the apartments and some land around there.
So net, what would it be if it's under a hundred, a hundred acres roughly?
I, I would only be guessing. I don't have the, uh, the, this, that, that, those parcels haven't been carved out yet. So I, I don't have that answer.
But are you talking like maybe 50% of the land to carve out or 175%?
No, 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 much, much less than that. Ju- just the, the, the land around the apartment building. So it, the, the majority of it would be retained by the seminary.
Okay.
So, um, do you have a timeline for the sale of whatever part of the property you decide you want to sell?
No, and, and Mr. Wheaton's points I think are well taken and I can assure him that, uh, that's something that we're, we're considering, uh, very clearly. We want to maximize the economic bel- benefit and, and the fiduciary obligation of the board is to do so. So, uh, we're going to be very careful about how we do this. Uh, but tonight's meeting really is to focus on the commercial overlay district. And, and, uh, what we're suggesting is that to, to have that kind of flexibility, uh, is going to be helpful for us. Whether or not we exercise it in, in terms of subdividing or retaining portions, we haven't come to that decision yet. Uh, a- as the president said, there's, uh, one of the options is to sell part and once sell all. And, and then there are other options that would come available with the commercial overlay district. But, uh, there's no, there's no strict timeline right now in terms of, uh, those things.
But the other part of it is also, it sounds like you don't have a strict, uh, size line either. I mean, we don't really know how much land you're talking about, in a sense.
Well, yeah, we could, I mean, that's going to become clear fairly soon. So we can provide that information to the planning board.
Roughly, what length of time do you think it'd take you to determine that? I don't mean to be rude and hard, but it may just, you know, it sounds pretty vague at this point.
Uh, I, I'm anticipating in the next several months that we would have a, a better fix on that.
Okay.
I, I would just I, I would just say it, it sounds vague because, uh, it is. It's not because there's a lack of understanding or anything like that. Uh, Mr. Mitchell's comments about lack of clarity. I think, um, they're accurate. They're absolutely. Um, this was from, from my standpoint, my understanding is this is a preliminary discussion um, of gather information about, uh, maybe differing viewpoints. Gather some, um, ideas as to, well, well, if you come back with that, that's just dead in the water because there's no way we're doing that. Or some, some of those kind of discussions. The, to me, this was intended to be a preliminary discussion. We don't have a formal document ready to lay in front of you. So it is, it is, it does lack clarity. Um, in a sense, we wanted to get a feel from you of if we clearly brought this, would it be within the realm of what you would anticipate and will, would look upon paper? That's kind of the discussion. This was not intended to be a, here's our presentation and here's our, our request. But a, what types of things would work? And, and you're absolutely right. It does lack clarity at this point.
Yeah. So what it sounds to me like is maybe you need to come to us with a list of specific possibilities. Vague as though they may be, at least give us some kind of specificity. So we can say, okay, uh, one, two, and three look like something we could work on. Four is absolutely out, uh, for whatever reason. And five and six are way down the list. I mean, something like that. I mean, at this point, we're just basically talking all about the possibilities of what the codes do, but we don't know. We can't tell you any answers because we don't know what the questions are.
Well, i- i- and I think maybe we'd be helped by the fact, I, as I understand, the master planning team, uh, committee had identified this parcel as being a good one to be considered for the overlay district. So we'd be happy to have, you know, more in-depth conversations with the, with the master planning committee uh, as to what their thoughts were in, in suggesting it. So we're, we're open to that. At this point, what I would say is that we looked at the overlay district as it is currently drafted. And the lists of the, uh, uses there seem perfectly appropriate for this parcel. Uh, would there be others? I wouldn't cut anything off that list. And would there be others? Perhaps there are others. And perhaps the, the master planning committee has some suggestions as to how to augment that list. But in answer to your question, what are we looking at? We're looking at the overlay district and this seems to be a good place for it. Uh, it seems to be in mutual benefit of the, of the town to be able to gain some, uh, taxable revenue from the property that, uh, that will only benefit the town and, and, and we're on board for that.
So basically you're looking at a commercial overlay district.
So let me ask the, a follow-up question. You could, if you don't, for a second. So you've, it sounds like you've engaged some, uh, real estate management or real estate investment firm to assist you in determining, um, uh, a, a strategy. Is that accurate statement?
We, we have, we have real estate professionals that are looking, uh, they're helping us look at alternative sites. And, uh, and then we're going to be bringing people in to talk about this particular site as well.
Alternative sites. Help me, are you talking about alternative sites for the seminary to move to?
Right. Well, as the president announced yesterday, uh, there is a goal to be able to have, uh, establish, uh, a, a larger presence than we currently have in Boston and the metro Boston area. So that's part of it. So that's, so we're looking at those things at this point.
Okay. So it sounds like you're doing an academic needs analysis.
Right. And the, and the feasibility studies that, that are needed to, to make that kind of, uh, an enterprise.
So So what, what question I have is, um, I understand you've got to do that to understand what you may need to retain or sell. So that's the first step. Now, I think it would be very helpful for the, uh, seminary to, to the degree that it can lay out the process that it's going through now. As you just described, you're doing, uh, needs analysis for your academic, uh, and your academic structure. What do you need? And, and where will that be located? So we know that what your timeframe is because we're working, just so you understand, we're working in a public and a very political environment. The town manager had been, um, pushing to have a, uh, commercial overlay district bylaw enacted at the next town meeting in October. That to me is, is totally unrealistic because you don't know what it is that you want to do. And just putting together a tool and saying, here it is, it is doing so in a vacuum. So I think if you could help us understand what your process is going through, you're doing an academic needs analysis. Does that include, um, uh, looking at the property you have now in Hamilton? And if you do vacate some or all of it, what are the uses you see happening there? Or are you thinking that the town should be doing that?
Well, I, I suppose, uh, maybe though they recast it in a different way, uh, you know, when I'm assuming that when the town decided to put this, the overlay district on the landfill, it was with the same kind of posture. There was no sense in terms of what would actually be there. Nobody had an idea. Uh, and I'm not sure what's, what's gone in there other than, I'm not even sure if the solar farm is on that parcel or near to it. But, um, you know, I, I think that's probably, as we look at it, is this, is this a good parcel for an overlay district? And, 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 and again, the town came to us and said, we, we've identified it as a good, a good candidate as, as a place for the overlay district. So I'm not sure that the town, um, the, the, I, I think the town would want to make sure that the overlay district is well constructed. And with Mr. Dalquist's kind of comments, that maybe some of that aspect, uh, that iterative process is in place. Um, rather than expecting a, a particular landowner to come with a particular plan. Uh, we're, we're not going to have that plan in the next month or two or three. I mean, we're just, we're simply not going to be able to tell the town, this is what we think should be built there. Uh, I think it rests with the, the role of the planning board and the town is to say, yeah, this is a good place for an overlay district. And when proposals come, we know we've got a process in place because we've drafted the thing carefully. And we'll consider it according to the, uh, the regulations that we drafted and that we worked together with the seminary to produce. And then as they come in, you, you make your decision.
I think
Marnie.
I mean, I, I think this parcel is completely different than the, uh, than the dump. Okay. Yeah. The dump was the dump and was not near anything. This piece of land is surrounded by nice, you know, middle to high-end housing. Some open pieces of land, uh, country club. So the question of whether it's appropriate for a commercial overlay district to be put on that hill in large measure, I think depends on exactly what you're going to do. And I think if, you know, it would depend. And I think if the town manager wants to get, you know, a changed commercial overlay districts through town meeting next fall, the first thing the townspeople are going to ask are, uh, what exactly do you have in mind? And, you know, uh, the district has, you know, lots of flexibility to it. And certainly that flexibility is warranted in a location where it currently is in place. Because there's not much damage that could be done to surrounding properties. But that's not true of that hill. Okay. That's a real central parts, the highest brown hills, the highest piece of land in town. It's surrounded by lovely houses, the country club, as I say. So, you know, uh, uh, I don't think there's, I would say the chances are minimal. So, you know, uh, uh, I don't think there's, I would say the chances are minimal at best of getting approval for an altered commercial overlay district before a town meeting. And, and without some pretty concrete idea about what's actually going to happen on that land, so the townspeople can judge whether they think that's an appropriate use for the Browns Hill and all its neighbors.
I, I think, I think, Bill, you're absolutely right, because from what I'm gleaning here is that um, this hundred acres, the, the seminary would like to have a portion of it used for affordable housing. They potentially, and it seems more likely than not, would like to retain some portion of it uh, to continue uh, the mission of the Gordon Conwell Theological Seminary. And that leaves another undefined portion of the property that could potentially be a part of some type of overlay district or some other type of zoning change. But I mean, we, we wouldn't put a commercial overlay district on the entire parcel. I don't believe you would put a commercial overlay district on top of affordable housing. So uh, it, it really, I think, to Bill's point, the lack of clarity is such that um, that there, there's nothing that the planning board could really do with respect to, to this site until it has more information and more concrete. And, and I think that I would invite you all to the June 7th meeting of the planning board, where Emil is going to present more information about the form-based um, uh, form approach. And, and maybe that will trigger some new thinking. But the other thing, I, I suspect is that if you do retain a real estate professional and the goal were to have some type of commercial development along the lines of New England Bio Labs, I, I question whether uh, that type of commercial development um, would uh, a commercial developer would um, want to be part of a, a, a site that had these other uses. They might want to control the entire site, uh, looking for expansion or, or something along those lines. I know um, that New England Bio Labs, um, you know, they have a big campus in Ipswich, they have properties elsewhere. But I, I would think that they would want a hundred percent site control as opposed to just a portion of it. Um, and, and basically, it almost sounds like a commercial developer would have to construct new buildings, because so many of the buildings are going to be either uh, subject to a harbor lights option or potentially your continued use of them. So there is the likelihood that, that uh, for some commercial development, that the existing structures wouldn't be adequate for uh, the kind of work that they would want to do. So.
I, I was gonna, I was actually going to respond to, so Bill Wheaton gave a presentation on Aura not long ago. And that was under, uh, that was a permanent application for a greater state um, by law application. And, and I wondered if, instead of a commercial overlay district in an area like this, I, I didn't, I actually, I guess, being new, I'm not sure if even Hamilton has uh, in its bylaw uh, applicable use under a greater state.
We do.
Or something like, so, I mean, that, that would be, you know, outside of re, uh, you know, defining the, the zoning, um, I, I don't know if there's, if this site checks all the boxes, but if it has a historical building on this property, but that might not be another option for them.
I'm not sure.
Actually, actually, it might be an option for Orca, because I'm not sure they're going to get Weldingfield.
That's a good point.
That's right. I, I honestly think you really have to, uh, there's a short-term decision, and then there's a long-term way. And I would hope that everybody's looking at the long-term here, because uh, that site has tremendous potential uh, in so many different ways. Uh, almost certainly, it's going to be a mixed-use setting at some point, my guess, um, but um, you know, I think, um, it sounds like you're asking perhaps the town to participate in, in help developing ideas for particular uses, is, is that right? Or, um, and also, it sounds like you want a little flexibility there, because decisions are not final on a lot of things. So you, you may want to, I, I mean, Gordon Conwell Theological Center may want to transition out completely, perhaps, in the future, at some point. So, you know, as Bill said, once you start dividing it up into smaller pieces, uh, you lose the strength of the, the whole site, because it's an extraordinary site, and as you know, and uh, uh, one that really represents a huge opportunity, but it's got to be done long-term, and it's got to be done best we can.
I think what you just said there was key to this whole thing, is like, if you read over the C O D as it exists, it's trying to avoid awkward sites and things that are beaten into sort of just hard-to-conform uses, uh, it's like having an all-or-nothing proposal, really. And I think trying to keep a lot of those buildings for other purposes, and only carve out what you no longer want to make use of is not conforming to the C O D as it stands.
Well, the, the important thing on that site, and I think Jonathan could attest to this, but when you walk onto that site for the first time, and I had the pleasure to do that not too long ago, but uh, is the open space, and it's just in a, a wonderful potential there. And you, you can, you can see the ideas start to develop and what the possibilities are uh, there on the site. And that kind of, a long view of that in a way that could be really creative, uh, and stop looking at it as a C O D, which is a one-size-fits-all kind of mentality. And, and look at the site for what it is and what, what value it brings to the community and, and to the, to the college. You know, again, a tremendous opportunity there, and uh, I mean, I'm sure the town would want to participate in some manner to help find a good, a good use, but I think you do need, as Rick was saying, you need to have your team together, people who represent your interests on that, certainly, um, as you know, and um, and I go forward, but in collaboration would be terrific, I think, you know, with uh, with the planning board. Master Plan is concerned about that site, but they're all, they're also kind of leaning to um, learning to maybe get exposed to a different type of uh, even like a form-based code in different parts of town. So they're kind of going in that direction, I think, so.
One thought to start a dialogue, because it seems like the, the, the challenge here is where to start to, to Rick's point and to Bill's point, is if uh, the seminary even built a couple scenarios, um, you know, here's a shoot-the-moon scenario, here's a bare minimum presence scenario, here's a scenario where we're dominating the hill, here's a scenario where we're tucked over in a corner. Um, even just if you, if you had some uh, rough concepts, it could get the conversations going, but right now, there's, there's not much to hold on to in terms of uh, even how to, how to start to think about where you would apply the C O D. Um, and what could, maybe could be interesting for the seminary, I don't want to be, you know, trying to, to play your designer here, but what you could do is you could do, maybe work at both, either end of the spectrum. You know, you shoot the moon and say, here's what we'd like ideally to, and, and keep our best buildings and keep the command of the hilltop. And here's our grand dream, and then here's, you know, the other end of the spectrum where here's how we could keep a minimum presence on the site, but really maximize our return, our, our financial return on our investment. And here's two completely sort of opposite scenarios, where one is we keep our identity here, and the other is we make a profit here. Um, and then those could be, there's two very distinct, different scenarios that the town could look at and respond to and say, you know, I see a cohesive potential for a C O D here, or no, this is fragments, and it's really hard to start a conversation. But just to, to start with uh, building so, a couple what-ifs, and then putting them before the, before the town, I think would, would create a more uh, productive discussion.
I, I think that we should move on, but again, I reiterate the invitation to come to the June 7th meeting, because that will be a joint meeting between the planning board and the master plan steering committee. And I think that um, uh, I, I think that you might be sensing that the, the C, C O D is not a total panacea for you, particularly in, a, a, at the stage where you are, where you haven't had the benefit of uh, professional real estate advice. And um, you know, maybe not have clarified exactly what your needs are and what your wants are uh, to, to Jonathan's point. Um, so um, I, I hope this has been productive and will get everyone thinking, but at, at, at this juncture, this conversation just simply has to continue. There, there's not going to be any closure this evening, uh, unfortunately, so.
I think basically what he's trying to do is come to ask us what generality kind of things we would want. And in reality, we don't do that, what we do is deal with a plan that's in place. Will that plan meet, the specific plan meet the bylaws and so on of the planning board? Uh, and he's putting the cart before the horse, and we need the, the horse in front of the cart.
But yeah, I, I, I think I need to reiterate, we're actually here in response to the outreach from the town. So we, we, we didn't generate this idea on our own, we were, we were approached to consider putting the overlay district on the seminary property. We thought about it internally, and we looked at the overlay district, and we've started coming up with some amendments that seem to make sense. I'm hearing what you're saying, but, but we're not, we didn't show up here with a proposal, because we're showing up here because the town had initiated the conversation. So we're happy to talk, we want to be collaborative. Uh, it is a wonderful piece of property, we understand that it's unique. Uh, it could be a gem, continuing as a gem right now, and there are uses that it could be put to that would be excellent. Uh, we would be delighted if, if we could generate some real tax revenues out of a portion, if not the entire lot for the town. Uh, that certainly is a good thing.
I get what you're saying, the, the problem is, we, we deal with definitive things. And the town, whatever that entity is, has given you wide, broad speculative ideas. And we need specific concepts, because that's what we do. We don't do actual future planning, we look at the plan and say, yeah, okay, that works for us, or this is what you need to change, and so on and so forth.
So one last thing is uh, is um, if you could get us a schedule of when you think you'll actually get to some vision points about your future at that site, that would be really helpful. And as a minimum to help us construct a path forward. I mean, is it, are we looking, you know, two months, six months, eighteen months? Whatever that number is, to come up with an answer, or yourselves internally decide whether you want to dispose of the property, or whether you want to retain the property. The other thing i- is, um, and I'm speaking to the board now. And Patrick, if you could provide some clarity here, um, that, that would be helpful is, as I understand it, uh, the same night that the planning board is potentially meeting with the master plan steering committee is the Z B A hearing on change of use. This has such a monster potential impact to the town. I, I, I'm suggesting it might make sense for the master plan steering committee, the planning board, and attend the Z B A meeting to find out what's going on there, because the Z B A is operating in the dark. Uh, they, they're going to just see a petition, if this is the actual date, from the seminary on a change of use. Well, master plan committee and the planning board are looking at this and saying, wow, this is a huge potential change in, in the use of, of very important piece of property. And the Z B A has, you know, is operating in, in its own environment without the input from the board, which I think would be very important to hear before they make a decision. So, is it for the seventh or not, uh, Patrick?
The Z B A meeting is on June the first.
Ah.
Yeah, the joint meeting between the master plan committee and the planning board meeting would likely be on the seventh.
Oh, all, all of the, all to the good, so I, I would suggest to the planning board members might want to be in attendance to the Z B A meeting, to at least share with them what we know, and what some of the bigger issues on affordable housing, on land use planning, on the master plan, and all the elements that are in circulation here.
Right, because this is a change of use from the existing use to residential use, am I correct?
Well, it's, they're currently residences under, under educational religious use, and they'd consider, they'd continue as residential uses, right? But, but not the seminaries.
But just, it would just be straight residential use.
That's right, that's right.
Right, okay.
As I understand it, the Dover amendment provides for housing as part of educational use. Uh, whereas market development in residential has to have its own use ability afforded to it, that wouldn't be covered by the Dover amendment. Because it's, it's simply not connected to educational.
Yeah. Thank you. So I, I, just in closing, if you guys could think about coming back with the next step is, what your schedule is? When you think you'll have some definitive answers, um, so we know what our timeframe looks like. I think obviously, trying to change this bylaw by October 1st does not sound realistic. But we'd just like to know where, where, what's the timeframe we need to be working here? Do we need to run, we need to, we have time to be really thoughtful and careful and work with you and construct, you know?
Yeah, well, we'll see what we can do on that.
Okay, and certainly, you know, your, your uh, proposed changes to the commercial overlay district would be substantial. So, um, Rick is absolutely right, there is no way that this planning board um, could um, go through that process, um, assuming that it was determined that that is the appropriate way to go, and have um, anything ready um, for a town meeting in the fall, particularly given our, our present schedule for the projects. Not going to happen. I, I would, I would be lying to you if I said it was possible. Would you agree? I mean, we would have to have public hearings and the whole nine yards, it, it, it.
I certainly wouldn't.
We're, we're ready to work as hard as you need us to, so.
Okay, so let's, thank you, gentlemen, I, it was a pleasure having you here. And please, um, you know, feel free to come to the June 7th meeting, and then when you, when you have more information for us, you're welcome to come back and uh, would like to hear from you. And I think, uh, you know, I, I think that, that what we can draw from this meeting is that the town would very much like to collaborate with the college. The town would like to have some source of uh, commercial revenue um, from a site as large as that. So I think that, that um, that the work would be to have all our interests coincide. And I think that um, it's certainly possible.
Great, thank you very much, Madam Chair.
You're welcome, have a good evening, gentlemen.
Thank you, thank you, Dawn.
So let's move on to other potential uh, zoning bylaw changes, and I can look at the agenda and maybe we can take them. Uh, as, as they are listed, so the first one is the council on aging the public safety building and the Winthrop School Campus. Now, we have talked about that in the past, and I guess the hiccup there is the Winthrop School is still being used as an elementary school. But the town does own that property, am I right, Patrick? And that.
Yes.
And did we ever finalize the tweaks that we did to the uh, lot line there? I think that we were doing a survey, um, do you recall that?
There was a discussion about uh, having a buffer between the uh, campus property and the uh, abutting residential.
Right.
I believe that's to the south. And uh, no, that, that has not been undertaken, since there's no budget being provided for that yet.
And the status of the Winthrop School is that. And the status of the Winthrop School is it will continue to function as a school until?
Or at least, at least one item that's coming up, uh, next special meeting in the fall is an authorization to spend seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars uh, to engage in a long-term strategic study that's required by the school building authority to determine, you know, what to do with the L, and I'm, I'm not, uh, on top of this, but to determine what to do with the schools. And I think it's gonna be both elementary schools, the three elementary schools. Um, but I'm told even if a decision was made today to take that school down and build a new one, that it would be eight to ten years before those doors opened. So changing the zoning of that site, um, wouldn't result in anything immediate. It would just, it would be part of actually a push and clarity by the town saying to the, um, regional school system, that property is ours and we're rezoning it for commercial. And we urge you to figure out what to do with the three, the three schools. So you can get off that piece of property so we can start generating revenue. That's sort of what I'm thinking the strategy is.
Yeah, and, and, uh, I will say this, um, I really like the form-based concept with respect to that property and how to integrate that property with the downtown and also, um, with Patton Park and then looking far into the future, um, you know, even contemplating what might happen uh, if Dodge Tree or any of the, uh, auto repair type places at the, uh, end of Willow Street were to, uh, change ownership or, or go out of business or, you know, I think so. I, I know one of the fellows is, uh, pretty elderly. Um, so, uh, yeah, I think that, that might be something we could work on and think about. Uh, because tying those parcels with the main part of downtown, uh, would be, I think, really key to the whole success of any development there.
Oh, I, I, I think that's a good idea. So the question is then resources, um, because what, um, Emil, uh, described was something that was sponsored by, um, Hartford Insurance Company. Um, unfortunately, we don't have the Hartford Insurance Company, so that would require that we're gonna have to hire an outside uh, firm to do the, um, the charrettes and, and, um, that won't be cheap. I, I like the idea because I think one of the big barriers to the Winthrop bike is people are gonna say, well, you want to change it to commercial, what's gonna happen there? Well, maybe the form-based is the right way to go so that there's a clarity and definition of what potentially could go there. And it's defined before you go and ask for the change of, uh, change of, um, zoning there.
I think it's the same issue, it's the same issue as Brown's Hill.
Yeah, yeah.
If you're gonna, you know, ask for a zoning change, the town's gonna wanna know what you're gonna do.
Right.
And they wanna think very carefully about it. And, um, I mean, I think it's a great idea too, but I, it's gonna be a difficult sell trying to do it in advance when there's all these, you know, decisions have to be made about what the school, is what's gonna happen to the schools and, and those are long-term decisions and there's nothing immediate. And when something comes up, um, then, then, then we can consider extending it, changing the law and then maybe we'll have support.
Well, Bill, I think that, that what Emil was suggesting is that you, you, you're, the town becomes proactive. And, and I'm thinking out loud, maybe we could get some community preservation funds for, um, uh, some work on, on this. I mean, there might be some sources of money, but, but that the whole part of this form-based approach is it's not the planning board coming up with ideas as to what should be there. It's getting the public involved to indicate what they prefer for that site. Am I right, Emil?
Yeah, that's right.
It's not, it's not the planning board trying to sell it to the public.
It's.
It's the public deciding this is what we want and the planning board implementing the public decision. And as Emil said, if that process is put in place and well-designed, then developers can come in and they know exactly what they can do. And the, the approval process i- is smooth.
Yeah, it's a very front-loaded process where, you know, you're right, uh, Rick. The fees are, th- there's a range of fees. If, if you did a national search and you get some of the top companies, they probably would be in the order of one fifty to two hundred thousand.
Yeah.
Uh, if you get somebody local, uh, but I, I do have to say, I think it's very important you get the right people. Um, and there should be, an R F P goes out, you might get a dozen responses. You wanna narrow it down to maybe five, have interviews with the top five and be careful, you know, who you choose. And, uh, um, so there is a way to go about doing it that, but it's not inexpensive. But in the long term, it is gonna give you the most assurance, I think, of getting it done right. So.
Wondering if we can go to the Barr Foundation and see if we can get some money.
Well, they, the, uh, the facilitator would come, a spokesman from the group would come and give a lecture, uh, to, and, and a much better lecture than you'll see from me in the, you know, PowerPoint. But they'll explain really the strength of what, what could be done, why it's important. And it'd be a public meeting and it would go a long way to convincing the public that they ought to consider, uh, going this route.
Emil, maybe. Go ahead.
Yeah. I, I just, what, just a perspective maybe that Marty touched on somewhat, but might be interesting to consider too, is the concern not only about what to rezone and develop or how to develop the next area uh, being proposed, but how the existing, uh, downtown has been developed. I think there's a, there's a lot of concern about the opportunities being missed with the existing downtown and the way it's been developed, uh, rather than looking outwards and, and looking to new, looking to, uh, propose new developments when we have so many opportunities with what is existing. And I think, you know, it's the challenges of the downtown, uh, you know, obviously being split by a, a state highway and, and whatnot. And the lack of walking availability between, you know, being able to get a sandwich and ice cream or whatever else. But I think that's may, that's maybe the major concern of the families in this area is that we've missed opportunity already.
Right. Well, I think that if we, if we thought about the commercial district as a whole and do a form-based code for the entire district that included the Winthrop site, even though it's not part of the commercial district, uh, that might go to answering your question. And it would serve as a pilot and say, okay, we, we've undertaken a very expensive, very intense public process to develop a form-based code. Um, and let's see if it works, you know? So that's one potential approach to that kind of thing is, you know, make this a pilot, make it cohesive to the downtown and go through the process and everybody can decide whether it works or they like it and was it successful?
Well, yeah, typically, uh, to answer, uh, Pat's question, I think on an existing property, uh, any new code that gets imposed in that area is not made retroactive. It doesn't mean that everybody now has to overnight commit to the code because you have existing buildings that grandfathered in. But at the first time that they do a major change to the building, then it has to conform to the, uh, form-based zone code in a downtown area. So things, a lot of the buildings would stay in place for a while until they, uh, they are, uh, need to be changed in some significant way. And then that's when the, the code on that area takes effect. So it'd be quite unfair. I think most people wouldn't buy into taking down your building because it doesn't conform to a.
No, I don't think they.
Wouldn't pass constitutional muster. But anyhow, Rick, I think that, that's, uh, that's really, you know, the best answer is to include the downtown area, you know, which obviously has some challenges. But by having this form-based code, it might, uh, you know, present a pathway for really improving um, the, um, the whole experience along Bay Road, you know? And, and then also tying in the existing downtown with any new development, which I, I presume, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, Emil, it would be likely to be more mixed use than just
Yeah.
commercial. I mean, it might include some residential and, and it, you know, I just think it could, uh, really, um, be a, a, a real boon to our town. And, you know, we are a planning board. We have to think long-term. So yes, you're right, Rick. This would not come to fruition, uh, anytime, uh, soon and maybe anytime in our tenure on the planning board. But it would be a real, um, uh, uh, feather in our caps if we laid the groundwork for some significant improvement, uh, to our downtown, which definitely with the railroad tracks, estate road, uh, Richdale and Cumberland Farm certainly could use some really creative thinking outside the box, getting public input, uh, process. So we'll have this more on this, I think, uh, uh, on that. But, um, I hope everybody can think about it and, and maybe see the benefit of it. So I think the M B T A communities, um, I don't think we have to really worry about that. Would you agree, Patrick? I mean, I, I think that probably, uh, so many small towns are up in arms that, um, that, uh, that, that there will have to be some kind of, um, rethinking of that process or that the town of Hamilton would maybe just elect not to go forward. Because what my understanding is that we would be required to build seven hundred and fifty units of housing. And I just don't see that happening, um, with the infrastructure that we have. So, uh, I think.
I'm in, I'm anticipating that effort to be in neutral for a while. There, it, to your point, so many communities have pushed back on the, the concept. And, and I think rightly so because, you know, so few of us have the ability to really integrate that kind of change that the state is, you know, attempting to impose on most of which are small communities like ours, uh, that really aren't set up, uh, in a way that has the ability to integrate this. Like I, I think I've said before, uh, this may have been possible a hundred years ago. Uh, but to that point, I, I do think that, you know, eventually something will happen. But, uh, the state has not prepared their, you know, completed effort relative to the M B T A community zoning yet.
Maybe, Patrick, what we could do is, uh, get a little, uh, time travel setup here and go back a hundred years, redo the town and then come forward a hundred years and have the redo in place. You can laugh, that was the intention.
Okay, so the, uh, next, uh, item is a change to uh, section four of the town bylaw, which, um, Attorney Stein indicated um, would not require a public hearing. But Bill, this, this really, um, uh, addresses some of the issues that we experienced on Bridge Street. Um, because the applicant withdrew its application on the grounds that it had not, uh, cleared.
It wasn't, it wasn't applicable, yeah.
Yeah, so right now.
Uh, Patrick, have we received, Mr. Murphy has two of the lots, eight and nine. We, we, we received.
No, we received nothing from him.
Or, or anybody else on the inter, on the intervening lots?
No, it's okay.
So. Maybe the change would be effective if it's that slow.
Well, my concept for the change would, would be to reduce the one acre trigger for the application of the stormwater management. So that, um, the, the, um, bylaw and the regulations would apply to smaller lots that had steep slopes and, and, and accordingly, uh, much greater risk of, um, erosion and contamination.
It's actually not the size of the lot that would be affected, it's the amount of land to be cleared.
Right.
But you can have, it could be a big lot, but if you were planning on clearing more than half an acre for your house, then you would have to come in.
Right. I, I think that, that my concept is, you know, if you have a flat lot that's an acre, well, fine. But it's really, if you're clearing land on steep slopes, that's, that's what, where the problem lies. So however, um, we would choose to amend the language, you know, whether it would be some type of sliding scale, uh, uh, it, it, it might be worth, uh, considering. I don't know whether we could get that, um, done before the fall town meeting, but, uh, certainly we could get it done, um, a year. Well, a little less than a year from now. And, and again, this isn't something that, that would necessarily implicate uh, any type of, uh, form-based approach to, uh, um, changes to the zoning bylaw. Would you agree, Emil? Oh, you're muted.
Yeah, I think that's right. Um.
But, but why would you wanna do some kind of development or work on a steep slope? It'd be too expensive to build on. We already have nine examples of that lining Bridge Street.
Right.
Okay, uh. I mean, land is getting scarcer. I mean, we have, we have more than that. We have, we have steep slopes and horrible ledge over on Essex Street. People are, are basically trying to build, there's no nice land left or not much of it. So, yeah, people are going to marginal land and trying to build on it. Would you send me, um, a list of the addresses of those parcels so I can drive by and take a look? I mean, I'd like to get an idea of what people can actually think they can do on a steep slope. You just drive by Bridge Street between Woodbury and Miles River and you'll see all the signs. I gotta make notes. And you wanna look up and see the clearing. And Miles River. On Bridge Street, right? Yeah, go north. Why not go south? Uh, you'll be closer to the clearing if you go north. Okay. Get a little better view of, uh, all the stumps. Both ways. And the steep slope. Never mind, Bill. Okay, on Bridge Street. Thank you.
Anyhow, um, I, I would suggest that everybody look at the language of, uh, section four of the town bylaw. That would be, uh, uh, i- it's, it's easy enough to find if you go on the town's website. And, and think about, um, how, uh, you might wish to amend that language. And, and Jonathan, I'm, I'm kind of looking at you because you have some real experience with this. So if you can, um, uh, uh, think about how, how you might just change that definition. And, um, I, I think it might be a, a worthwhile endeavor. And, and i- if, if necessary, we can, you know, talk more about that on June seventh. I wanna try and wrap up our meeting as close to nine o'clock as possible. So we may have some really long evenings coming up, so I, I would hope that this one could be a little shorter. Uh, and then, so I, I can inform you that the Affordable Housing Trust is looking at, um, uh, uh, potential amendments to the Inclusionary Housing Bylaw. We did get, um, opinion letters from Robin Stein with respect to how the Inclusionary Housing Bylaw should be interpreted in terms of the computation of the fee and lieu as well as, um, uh, the number of, uh, required, um, affordable units, uh, relative to how many units are being constructed in total. And so the Affordable Housing Trust is, is undertaking a survey of, uh, of the Inclusionary Housing Bylaws in neighboring towns. And I can tell you Topsfield doesn't even have one. I was looking at Topsfield. So we, we're going to try and put that, um, uh, put some of, uh, uh, you know, come to some kind of consensus as to how, uh, those two. come to some kind of consensus as to how those two portions of the Inclusionary Housing by law can be clarified so that we don't have to go to town council again on that.
What were the two portions again, please?
The, the fee in lieu.
Say it again?
The fee in lieu of the construction of, of affordable units.
Okay, yeah.
And the other was the calculation of the number of units that are required. I know Corey interpreted the language one way, and I know one of the members of our Affordable Housing Trust interpreted it the way Corey did, but that was not the way.
The right way. No, it's.
So it turned out it wasn't the right way.
Not according to the common sense.
Right. But you know, that, that just goes to, to the ambiguity of the language. Because, you know, both Corey and Suzanne Soffa are not, you know, they're, they're quite, you know, accomplished professionals and, and they read it in a way that made sense to them. So we want to make sure that the, the language makes sense to everyone without any kind of issues whatsoever. So the other bylaw amendment that we might consider is the change in the language to the G O P D. Because that, you know, Dave Thompson was the one, he sent an email. I have it. I don't think it really matters what the date is of his email, but if anybody needs a copy of it, I can refer them, I can send a copy. But, but the way the language reads now, it permits, I think, more units than what was intended. And Dave Thompson said the 80,000 square feet was per dwelling unit, not per lot. And I think that we should all go back and, and look at section, it's section 9.1.4 of the G P O D.
I agree with Dave on this. I read that backwards and forwards. I looked up the definition of a lot. A lot is always a parcel of land on which a dwelling unit can be built. And I, but, but there are other people have tried to interpret that 80,000 as, as applying to the parcel of land, the whole parcel of land, not to the lot on which a house sits. And I just, we need to clarify that because I, the original intent was it for to refer to the house lot. Yeah.
Yeah, right. So the way it reads now, it says regardless of the minimum lot size of the underlying zone, there shall be a minimum lot area of 80,000 square feet for a building lot in the G O P D. And it really should say 80,000 square feet for a dwelling unit in the.
Just those, I agree. Add those like two words, then it's, there's no ambiguity anymore.
Right, exactly. And, and I don't know, Patrick or Rick, do you know when the G P O D was last amended or when it even was enacted? Do we know?
Yeah, there is some history there. I can't give you a date, but we had this long discussion because Canterbury was in the G P O D and interpretation of this. And where did it come from? Why was that 80,000 square feet number picked? And as it turns out, it was Peter Clark and what's the property, Peter, right next to Canterbury.
Peter Britton.
Thank you, Peter Britton, who were both on the planning board at the time. And this is, has to be probably 30 years ago. Were trying to mitigate the burden on the town's water infrastructure so that these lots would accommodate their own well and a septic system at the same time. So they wanted to have at least two acres to separate the septic from the water. So there wasn't off contamination. And that's the genesis of that. And that, that's how it occurred. So I think while we can clarify the language, we ought to be looking at, okay, if we do this and we interpret it this way, how many properties is this going to impact? What's the economic impact of making this change? And does it make sense to do this? Given the scarcity of buildable land in town. So I just, rather than just doing it blindly and say, hey, we're reinterpreting this and this is the way it's going to read, you ought to say, okay, well, if Eric Clark and, and God, I can't remember the name, Peter, had this intent, well, you know, that the times have changed since then, what do we really want this to accomplish?
They did that just before I came on the board the first time.
Okay, there you go.
And they picked the 80,000 because that was the largest lot that we had in the current zoning. So I mean, I'm not sure I agree with this. I'm not saying that, but, but the, the argument was, well, if this is land that, that, you know, is, is hard for us to service with, and people have to use wells, maybe we should, you know, make sure that we use the lowest density that currently allowed in the town for the G P O D. So I, I'm, I'm not sure we should use 80,000, but we should definitely make it clear that it applies to the lot.
Yeah. And then that, that's fine. That's an easy fix. But then the question is, okay, so what are the unintended consequences of doing that? Or intended consequence?
Yeah, it, it could make some areas of town where there's open land and that are zoned more densely. It's, you know, because of the water situation, they would have to, it's almost like a de facto rezoning. That's what it would be. I mean, I'm not, I don't have the map in front of me and I can't say which areas and, 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 and how. But that, that would be the de facto outcome.
But are you talking about making this retroactive?
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Are you talking about making this a retroactive situation?
No.
No, you can't make anything retroactive.
I didn't think so, but I just wanted to make sure.
If there was development, was proposed on land that was in the groundwater protection district, then you would have to abide by this standard, not whatever the zoning law said.
Right. Thank you.
Well, I think, you know, the, the purpose of tonight's meeting was not to make any hard and fast decisions. It was to have a discussion. So I think at this juncture, we should, we should turn to board business. And part of board business is a determination of the agenda for, for June 7. I think that, you know, I looked at the commercial overlay district and, you know, with the benefit of, of studying the senior housing by law for as long as I have, I found a lot of the language in the commercial overlay district to be very subjective. And I just, I took my red pencil and went nuts. So I don't know if we want to leave that in abeyance until the college or the seminary comes back to us. So that's, you know, one item we could discuss a, a little more. And, and then also, if the board were to determine to make changes to this stormwater by law, then I would suggest that we vote to do so at the next meeting. And then we can appoint two members to do the drafting. I don't think, I think that, that, that a sliding scale, I kind of like that concept, but I would defer to Jonathan or, or Emile or anyone who has more experience with these stormwater management regs and how to, how to address the very, the, the very thing that happened on Bridge Street. I think that, that the, the goal is to prevent that from happening simply because less than an acre of land was cleared. Because Bill, you saw the runoff from those lots on Bridge Street.
Oh, yeah.
And, and, and we don't want that to happen. And, and it was particularly problematic there because of the proximity of the Miles River. So that's why I think that we could make that change to the by law if we so vote to do that and get the ball rolling.
I would, you know, it, it seems to me that both the groundwater protection overlay change and the stormwater change are, are doable things for the fall meeting. I think the rethinking the, the commercial overlay is kind of a longer term.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
But we, we actually might, I mean, by, you know, a couple more meetings and we might be able to get those two things that are more concrete.
I would like to be able to get more of, oh, we hate to use this word, but legislative history on, on the G P O D. I mean, I take Dave Thompson at his word when he indicated the intent was a dwelling unit. But again, I mean, if we could get copies of the minutes going that far back, they would be accessible somewhere, wouldn't they? Would it?
I suspect so, but I have a couple of town council opinions relative to the G P O D management and use from the board. I'll make sure and get, I'll try to find those and send those out to the board. So you have the benefit of those.
Right. And, and I recall.
They don't comport with, with Mr. Thompson's approach.
Right. But he said they essentially that they were wrong. So.
You know, that's a really, because when Brian Stein was on the board, he also was of that view. And I spent a whole evening looking up every single definition of a lot I could find on the web. And it always referred to a unit. So I don't know where, where it came from, but a lot is the land on which a unit sits.
Right. And so.
Go ahead.
You're talking about a unit of housing, right?
Right. So I think regardless.
Not a building, not a building.
So if one building had three apartments, that's.
Well, you can have 10 apartments on, and then you'd have, you'd soak up all the water in the land, right? Doesn't make any sense.
Well, anyhow, we can continue this discussion and, and really, regardless of what a former council opinion was, that would not preclude this planning board from making a change if they deemed it appropriate. So again, that's something we should take up on June 7. So those two things, I think, are doable. And, and if there's discord on the G P O D, that, that we can explore further. But those two things I'd like to put on the agenda. And so I will ask, does anyone else have any particular bylaws that they would like to discuss at the next meeting, bearing in mind that it is a joint meeting with the Master Plan Steering Committee? And we're going to get more of information about the form-based code. So, but please, I, I welcome any input that anybody has. Anything else you want on this agenda?
Nothing, nothing on the agenda, Marnie, but I, just before we adjourn, because I have a feeling that's where we're going, is I just want to remind people of the June 1 meeting of the Z B A. Where they're going to be asking for a change of use at the Gordon Theological Seminary for that housing. And given the confusion surrounding that piece of property and the potential impact of all the this pork chopping of this piece of property, I, I think it behooves the town to use its only portion of leverage on this element of this piece of property and say, no change until you have a definitive plan.
I, I have to, I, I have to, I tend to want to agree with you on that. And it really is in some sense because, you know, the, the, the potential for this option to tie up the development of that site for years.
Oh, yeah.
Rick, is, is the, is the proposal for the Z B A a change of use for those two, I guess it's building A and B?
It might, it might be for all the buildings that Harbor Light has an option on. So my recollection of what Andrew DeFranza says, he has the option on units A and B and C and D. And then he wanted flexibility with respect to E and F. Because I.
The newer, the newer units?
I assume so. I know units A and B, the other two not so much. But, you know, the financing for, you know, we, you know, redeveloping that dormitory space into affordable housing, while it's probably less expensive than starting from scratch, is still not inconsequential. And then, of course, he would have, Harbor Light would have to buy, you know, some portion of the property.
Right. And, and in addition to that, they would be using a substantial portion of the existing sewage system there. So a future developer or builder would be looking at this going, well, jeez, they're already using already of the septic system. Now I'm going to have to build my own sewage treatment plant on top of this other, other use.
And is there a well that they use up there as well?
Marnie, can I just jump in for a sec? I think you're getting a little bit outside the planning board's agenda for the night to, to start talking about what might be pending before the Z B A. Maybe Patrick can just circulate the application to you folks and then you can see what they've applied for.
Well, you, you know, I think they actually, it's, it's almost common knowledge that they are applying for a change of use. I think all.
I just meant the specific.
I don't have the knowledge.
You know, guessing.
I don't know what they're gonna do.
Yeah, I would like to see it too. Yeah, yeah. Patrick circulated.
Right. Yeah. But they, they can't, you know, that, they can't do affordable housing without a change of use.
No, I just, folks would just see what was in the application and you would just know.
Right.
So June 1, that's all, my only point.
Okay. And then, so the other board business, Patrick, do we have any, any update on getting someone to do the minutes for the planning board? Because I, I don't think we're at the crisis stage yet, but on June 7, I might start to think that we're at a crisis stage. We have got to record the, what, the, what transpires at our meetings. I think it's particularly important with respect to the 133 Essex Project to have minutes of those meetings and have those minutes available at such time where the board begins its deliberation. So.
I asked the, the town manager and the finance director today specifically about this. The town manager has a request to the finance committee for a reserve fund to be able to hire either a service or individuals between now and the end of June. So that request is going to be considered on Tuesday of next week.
Right. I mean, I, I do think it's important that we, we get this done. And I, I know that there was discussion of just getting a transcript. And a transcript would be better than nothing. So does anybody else have any new business or anything they would like to contribute before we entertain a motion to adjourn or before I entertain a motion to adjourn? None? Okay, so we didn't do too badly, 9:14.
I make the motion to re-adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we'll do a roll call, Bo. So Rick Mitchell? So Rick Mitchell?
Uh, Rick Mitchell, aye.
Richard Boroff?
Richard Boroff, aye.
Jonathan?
Jonathan Porter, aye.
Emile?
Emile Dalquist, aye.
Bill?
Bill Wheaton, aye.
And Marnie Crouch, aye. So I think we stand adjourned. I think it was a productive meeting. I think we can continue our discussions. I would like to put on the agenda a discussion of the commercial overlay district just in case anybody decides to talk about it or anybody wants to go through it and, and, and make some, some comments about whether it's salvageable or, or not, or whether we should consider alternatives. And just before we go, Patrick, does this overlay district specifically apply to the landfill now?
Right now it does because, see, there are two actions that would have to take place. One of which would be mapping, the other of which would be an amendment to the location.
Okay, well.
The text.
I think I, I, I offended Robin. I think I vote to adjourn. I think we stand adjourned, but we still had a couple of questions.
Yeah, best to get them in before the adjournment.
I know, we're all human.
Oh, no, no problem, just, you know.
Somebody could complain.
Thank you.
Yeah, okay. Gentlemen, have a good evening.